Town of Prescott Valley, regular town council meeting, February 25th, 2021. This is called order, welcome everyone. At this time, I'd like to invite Chaplain Rusty Thompson. Come on up, sir. If you would, please, sir. Say where you're from.
Good evening, I'm Rusty. I am from Prescott Valley, Arizona. The chaplain at large. Let's pray for tonight's proceedings. Thank you, Lord. Thank you for this assembly of dedicated public servants diligently serving our town of Prescott Valley for the betterment of their fellow men. Thank you for the presenters in pursuit of the community's best end and for the projects and facilities that they represent that enhance our community. Thank you for each department represented here tonight. Thank you for their service to your community. As this meeting proceeds, we ask that your hand be on each presenter and that your heart be with us to guide the considerations and decisions made. We ask for your wisdom to inhabit our leaders and to involve itself in all communications here tonight. We need you, Lord, and we thank you, and we ask for your help and guidance, in Jesus' name. Amen. Can we stand for the pledge, please?
Take it away, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Kinsinger.
Present.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Heffertley.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Present.
Councilmember Packard.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Present.
Mayor Palgura.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna jump right into item five, which is proclamations, and this is proclamation of Youth Arts Month. So who will be joining us for that?
Whereas art education contributes powerful educational benefits to all elementary and secondary students, including the following: developing students' creative problem-solving and critical thinking abilities; teaching sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities; giving students a deeper understanding of multicultural values and beliefs; reinforcing and bringing to life what students learn in other subjects; and interrelating student learning in art production, art history, art criticism, and aesthetics. And whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including arts experiences in all students' education; and whereas the Prescott Valley Arts and Culture Commission supports continued arts education and public art programs and encourages support of art teachers as they attempt to strengthen art education in their schools and communities, there be it resolved that we celebrate youth art in Prescott Valley with a month-long display of art in our community event, Family Arts Festival. Now therefore, I call Palgura, Mayor of Prescott Valley, Arizona, to hereby proclaim the month of March 2021 as Youth Art Month and encourage all citizens to join us in celebrating youth art in Prescott Valley.
Hi, everyone. We just want to thank you so much for supporting Youth Arts Month yet again. This last year, despite how hard it was for all of our teachers, we still had 15 teachers from nine different schools bring in artwork for our Youth Arts Month show, which is so incredible, and we're gonna have about 200 students represented in our show. So we're actually hanging it tonight and tomorrow in the library, so please, everyone, if you get a chance, starting Saturday, come and take a look at all the Youth Arts Month exhibit here in the library. We're so excited to be able to do it again. Thank you all.
Moving on, now we're gonna be at certificates. Parks and Rec Commission Service Award Presentation to Buzz Gummer. It's five years, with like a little apostrophe, and we're gonna talk a little bit about that, so. Come on up here, Buzz.
I like facing this way. I'm Casey Van Herren. I'm the Community Services Director for the Town of Prescott Valley Library Arts Parks and Recreation. That flowed off really well. I've not known Mr. Gummer very long, but I know he's been a huge part of this community for many, many years, and as he's only getting five years, he's actually been on the Parks and Recreation Commission for 24 years, and that's huge. So he's made a huge contribution to this community and is almost, he's pretty much the foundation for our Parks and Recreation Commission, and he's been huge, and we're very, very appreciative of your time, Buzz. Thank you. Bobby wanted to share some stories, since Bobby started when you were like, what, 10?
Eight.
Eight. He was eight, and had lots of experience with Mr. Gummer, so.
As Casey had alluded to, Buzz has been with us 24 years now. He is what the foundation of Parks and Recreation currently is built upon. He has been out at events. He is probably one of the best emcees I have ever seen. He would give a horse track announcer a run for their money. He can do anything and everything. He has always guided us and has been one of those people that we can come to and ask questions, look for direction, and also see what our community is really gonna want. So I can't say anything more than thank you so much for 24 years, Buzz. It's been great.
So it's been pretty rewarding to be a volunteer for the Town of Prescott Valley. I got to work and meet many mayors, council members, town staff, parks directors, and many citizens that have also volunteered. So anybody that's been thinking about volunteering with the town, I encourage it. It's been very rewarding, a lot of fun. You meet a great group of people, and you know what? We're in good hands right now because we have a proactive mayor and council with a strong vision for the future of Prescott Valley. We have a tough town staff, always working hard for all of us citizens, and Casey and Bobby are doing a fantastic job with taking over community services. And you have many dedicated volunteers in this town that serve on commissions in many other parts of this town, and I just appreciate everything they all have done. And so, in closing, you know, you honor me tonight for the years of service to the town, but it's been an honor for me to serve the Town of Prescott Valley, and I thank you so much for this. Thank you very much.
All right, folks, moving on. Council comments and communications. We'll start down on the end. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor Kel. Couple announcements I want to make. Number one, Zat Casa Monthly Meeting today. They have resumed bingo, and it's on Tuesdays at 1:30, Saturdays at 2:30, but you do need to call 928-772-3337 if you want, they're limited seats. So if you want to participate in bingo, you're gonna need to call, but it's a great, they're a great organization and a bunch of great ladies to work with there. Another thing I want to do is kudos out to the Prescott Valley Police Department tonight. There was, we got a letter from a Ron Purcell. He had stalled about a week and a half ago in Glassford, and happened to be Officer Davis came up behind him, helped him push his car off the street. He was very appreciative of that action and that service provided by the officer. A lot of times, we do get negative comments, but this was a positive comment. I want to share it on, and I want to share that with the Prescott Valley Police Department. One other thing, they had an arrest this weekend where they had to deal with a suspect. They had a homemade bomb and a number of issues, other charges, so again, kudos out to you folks. A lot of times, you have the target on you there, chief, and appreciate you getting your people out there and supporting the town and keeping us safe, so thank you again.
Councilman? Vice Mayor?
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here. I want to thank Bella for being here and Community Services for being here to recognize Youth Art Month, and I have something to add. So Matforce is a very important partner to us. They help us fight as many drugs as we can, and they have a Stand With Me Be Drug Free Youth poster contest. The deadline's April 2nd, 2021, and you can either call 928-708-0100 or go to the Matforce website and find out more information, but the more the merrier. We want that poster to be very effective for people to be drug-free. I also want to call it a couple consent items tonight, which are routine in nature, but there's some awesome, awesome ones, just a few to call out. So on AD, our monthly financial report ending January noted that as revenues and expenditures are monitored, it is important to review the town's position of total revenues over total expenditures to ensure the town is in compliance with policy and bond covenants. The year-to-date revenues are above the year-to-date expenditures by just over 10.5 million. So, you know, people tell us we need to pay off our bills, which we do, and we still have this surplus. So with the expenditures, we still have a surplus of over 10.5 million. So sleep easy tonight, Prescott Valley, you're being taken care of. 8E, we have several grants on the agenda tonight. One of them is $129,000 from Prop 207 funding, so that's the marijuana proposition that just got approved. The governor, in his wisdom, set aside some money ahead of time so that organizations could apply and be ready for when the bill took, the proposition took effect, and we're able to buy two cars with that $129,000 to be used to reduce impaired driving. And I want to thank Chief Rosen for his ongoing efforts with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. Keep it up. 8I is approving a professional services agreement for a water-smart customer portal. So this is software so that our residents can see moment-by-moment, day-by-day information on their water usage. So it'll be a software program that you can eventually hook up to, and it also will assist the town because we'll monitor it all the time to make sure that there's no leaking. So if you've ever gotten a water bill that's a little bit higher by the end of the month because you had a leak, this will, this will help you track it immediately and fix it so that you don't have that high bill. So that's a great thing. We were at a meeting, a chamber meeting the other day, and we got some demographics on Prescott Valley that I wanted to share with you. So our population right now is about 47,000, although we're told with the new population, the new census coming out, it'll be up to 54,000. That doesn't mean that we grew that fast. That just means that because every 10 years we have a census, that's what the number is gonna be, the new number's gonna be. Our median age is 46. Median household income is 51,909. Per capita income is 41,393. Average household size is 2.3, 2.6 for renter occupied, and owner-occupied households is 64.9%. Our total businesses are almost 3,500, and daytime employment is about 36,360. So our numbers are improving for Prescott Valley. We're getting a little bit younger. Our median income and household income is going up, so rest easy tonight.
Councilwoman? Councilwoman Dickinson?
Yes, I have a couple of things to share. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. This last week, I attended a ribbon cutting for a new restaurant. It actually is an old restaurant that has been taken over by new owners and renamed. It is now called the Redwoods Grill at Prescott Golf Country Club in Prescott Valley, and I've been able to sample their food a couple of times with family and friends. Very good, and I encourage you to, to visit their fine establishment. The other item is that this last, within the last couple of weeks, the council was invited to a special pre-stress site demonstration at the Summit 2 Water Tank, and this 3 million gallon, 3 million gallons of water in this beautiful tank, they gave us a very detailed and comprehensive explanation of how this tank was built, and the, a demonstration of the, putting the wire around it, and it is going to enhance our community in a huge way, and we're so grateful for their talents and skills that they have put into this. I met a number of the workmen there that came from all over, and from the Midwest and California. They've got, I think they said 3,000 tanks that they have put together, and this tank will not require any upgrades or fixing due to this beautiful tank that they've put together, and in comparison to what we have already. Anyway, I wanted to give you an update of what we've been doing, and also, if you get an opportunity when the summit trail is open, be sure and take a look at this beautiful tank.
All right. Moving on, item eight, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. Council, we've all had a chance to review.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent, Keller, and we're by electronic vote.
I second it.
Or call the vote.
Councilmember Kinsinger?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 9A, Ordinance Number 888, Adopting Town Code Article 8-08, Mobile Food Vendors, Second Reading. Council, if you recall, we had our clerk discuss this item as well as council last time, I believe a couple of weeks ago. Are there any other questions for the clerk at this time? If that's not the case, go ahead and read it.
An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopted by reference a document entitled Article 88, Mobile Food Vendors, declared by Resolution Number 2178 to be a public record, which enacts a new Article 88, Mobile Food Vendors, in Chapter 8, Business, in the Town Code, providing for the licensure and regulation of mobile food vendors operating in the Town of Prescott Valley, providing that all other articles, sections, and subsections in this Chapter 8, not herein amended, shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provisions in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Clerk, shall this ordinance pass?
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinsinger?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item 9B, Zoning Code Amendment, ZOA 20-004, Amendment to Chapter 13 for Density Regulations. Again, council, will you have any questions in regards to this? I believe Mr. Parker is here if there are any questions. Otherwise, clerk, go ahead and read the ordinance.
Ordinance Number 882. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopted by reference a document entitled Amendments to Chapter 13, Density Regulations, declared by Resolution Number 2172 to be a public record, amending density regulations in Sections 13-210, Section 13-1330, Section 13-1430, Section 13-1530, Section 13-2010, and Section 13-2520, and Chapter 13, Zoning of the Town Code, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code, not herein amended, shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Clerk, shall this ordinance pass?
Councilmember Kinsinger?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 9C, Zoning Code Amendment, ZOA 20-005, Recreation Item nine C, zoning code amendment ZOA 20 dash 005, recreational marijuana regulations. This is our second reading as well. Council, any questions further? And if not at this time, clerk, will you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 883. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopted by reference a document entitled Recreational Marijuana Regulations, declared by resolution number 2174 to be a public record, which amends Sections 13-620, Use Regulations, Section 13-1420, Use Regulations, Section 13-1480, Performance Standards, and Sections 13-1570, Performance Standards, and Chapter 13, Zoning, relating to the regulation of recreational marijuana, providing that all other articles, sections, and subsection, sections in Chapter 13, not herein amended, shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, clerk. Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinzinger?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we get on to item 10, uh, are you guys cold?
Yes.
Yeah? We turn the heat up a little bit? All right, so we'll get that going. Proposed annexation ANX 20 dash 001 Northwest SR 89A in Glassford Hill Road, Section 33, public hearing. I'll open it up right now. Let me hope you guys get hot, all right? It's hard to satisfy everyone, but...
Thank you.
Welcome, sir. Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this first item is a public hearing for the proposed annexation 20 dash 001, basically the entire Section 33. So as you can see, here is the location, um, adjacent to the town limits. Um, the entire section is bifurcated by SR 89A, and, uh, this is the section that we're looking at at this point. Here's the annexation map that was published. Um, again, it's the entire section, Section 33 of Township 15 North, Range 1 West. As part of the annexation requirements, there, uh, is a public hearing that is posted as well as sent out to property owners within the annexation area, um, associated with this. Once we record, once we, excuse me, once we file the blank annexation petition, we then have 30, we then have 30 days before we're able to collect signatures within the annexation area. And within the last 10 days of the, the 30-day period, we are to hold a public hearing. So this is within the last 10 days of when this annexation, uh, petition was recorded or filed with the county clerk. One of the items that we wanted to point out is that this is within the general plan land use map. Um, so as you can see, the, the area that falls within the annexation area is in this quadrant right here, uh, adjacent to PAD 3 dash 1. So as part of this, uh, PAD 3 dash 1 within the general plan, this is called a growth tier 1. So growth tiers, we have three different growth tiers. Growth tier 1 is the specific area that's associated with areas that we're able to grow into that have access to public facilities, whether they're, uh, transportation, public infrastructure such as water, wastewater, and so forth. And this area specifically sits in one of those areas and adjacent to one of those areas. So the, the, the growth tier 1 PAD 3 dash 1 area, as you can see, is actually a, a larger area that's associated with, uh, the, the town's general plan. Um, the character of that area, um, is designated as regional commercial and employment centers as well as office business park to serve the surrounding communities. And then the land uses, land uses that are land within that area, commercial, mixed use, uh, residential, medium-high-density residential, and open space. So it's a mixture of uses, enabling those that, um, have property within that area to develop it into a master plan type community. That said, um, that's the, the, my presentation at this point. If you have any questions for staff, I'm happy to answer those, and, uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions that may come out of the public. All right, at this time, let's just open it up to the public. I don't know if we have people here for 33, but this will just be for this section. There'll be other opportunities to speak for other points, but just keep in mind, this is for this portion of the public hearing. Clerk?
Yes, we have three speakers. Will Peggy Bailey please come forward?
Welcome, ma'am.
Never done this before, so I just start talking?
You just start talking, you'll see a little timer kick up there once in a while, and just, kind of just be cognizant of your time, that's all.
Okay. I am, I was just made aware of this. Um, I'm a resident of Coyote Springs, and, um, I'm pretty concerned about the abundance of development already going on in the area. Uh, I know you are responsible for trying to make a wonderful community for lots of people, um, and the tax opportunities and incentives for property tax, et cetera, are really attractive, but there's already Granville going up, there's development near Glass, um, Retchon Mountain High School, there's the developments by the Dells, crazy developments near Mingus Mountain at the base, all over. And, um, people like me who live in Coyote Springs, we have private wells, and there's groundwater, and that's the only way I can get my water. And one of my personal friends, it has a business, he makes his livelihood delivering water to people whose wells have dried up in the whole northern Coyote Springs area, north of Antelope Meadows, north of, um, the development right in between. So what happens to us when our water dries up because it's going to all these new wonderful master plan communities? So I would like you to really consider the current population who lives there before making, uh, decisions like this. Also, I'm wondering if the town council has, um, undertaken to do a water study, not that was performed by a developer or provided by a developer, but independent of that, to find out how much water really is around to support the community up here. So those are my questions.
Awesome, ma'am. Thank you very much for coming down. Clerk?
Citizen Jean Emery?
Welcome, ma'am.
Well, besides water concerns, which is great, it's huge. Um, there we go, ooh. Uh, the water concerns are just ginormous, uh, around here. Uh, again, look at our, uh, lack of monsoon this last summer. Uh, we don't, we don't have a crystal ball. We can plan on things based on models, but there are no guarantees. I'm very, very concerned about the water around here. That's number one. Number two, I moved here 27 years ago because it was a nice, small rural community, a good place to raise children. With all this growth, you're negating the reason I moved here. It has turned into a city rather than a town, and we have to say, draw a line. We're getting too big. We're eliminating the charm of this place. We don't need any more houses in here, especially little tiny houses stuck on little tiny lots. This is, this is cowboy country. This is rural. Let's keep it that way. And, uh, not to mention the traffic and everything else that more people generate. It's getting crazy around here. So, anyway, that's all I had to say, and I would appreciate consideration on that.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for coming up. Clerk?
Citizen Steve Carros?
Welcome, sir. Steve Carros, Pronghorn Ranch. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I would like to encourage each of you to delay the consideration of any and all annexations until at least safe yield 2025 is achieved. And I'm not talking about a little annexation for a sewer line or something, talking about subdivision-type things. It is the right, wise, and prudent thing to do. I've carefully reviewed what Mr. Munderlow, our water resources director, has been seeing for some time now, and have discovered that there have been some misunderstandings regarding water sustainability here in the community. The fact is that safe yield 2025 is a response to significant mining of the aquifers throughout Arizona and includes our local AMA. Mr. Munderlow has actually made it clear that water mining is negatively impacting all of Arizona and now requires state mandated efforts to resolve the situation. Experts connected with Arizona State University are on record as pointing out the primary cause of these negative impacts is out-of-control development coupled with repeated severe drought cycles. Incidentally, seven of the last 11 years have been drought, and most of those have been Level 5 severe drought. 2020 was the worst drought on recorded record since 1898. It had only 6.69 inches of water for Prescott Valley. That's only 35% of normal. That figure starts my committee in the middle of the night, and it should everybody in here. Our community needs to come together to face our water challenges. However, to accomplish this, we need to avoid the semantical propaganda, which has misled folks to think we are not facing water sustainability issues. For example, on Monday's local radio broadcasts, concerned citizens were referred to as naysayers who think that we will run out of water by next week. Obviously, at the very least, that was an exaggeration, and in my opinion, altogether an accurate description. Also, on the same radio program, a guest stated that our primary well is prolific. If the term prolific is to be applied to our well, then we must also acknowledge that it is a prolific vehicle in the mining of the aquifer that Mr. Munderlow warns us is dropping at least one foot a year. Furthermore, one of our former council members recently referred to water sustainability issues as a fable, and the Pronghorn Ranch water meeting last fall was billed as an effort to dispel the myths.
Sir, I'm going to ask you just to kind of wrap it up at this point.
Okay, let me speed it up then and, and wing it.
When I say speed up, I mean like 10, 15 seconds, please.
Okay, well, Mr. Munderlow has a three-legged stool of resolving this safe yield. However, in the last couple of years, this three-legged stool is weakening and weakening in its viability. We need to come together as a community before we start talking annexation and all this other stuff and get, get the water sustainability, safe yield resolved. Otherwise, we have no business, um, talking annexation.
Thank you for coming out, sir.
Heart before the horse. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Clerk?
I have, um, two citizens that didn't put the agenda items. I wanted to offer an opportunity for Jody Smith. Is this the item you wanted to speak on? Okay.
Miss, Miss Smith, if, this is just going to be for the annexation of 33. You'll have another opportunity for a little bit later. Okay.
Another comment for only agenda item 10A from Michael DiGiorgio? Yes, no?
Michael, are you here?
Okay. That's it?
All right. Sir, you can come on back up. Do you have any additional comments or?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, I do not at this point. Uh, again, this is just a public hearing item. There's no action being taken by the council. Um, it's just to, uh, at this point, uh, potentially gather signatures from the property owners in that area once the 30-day period is up.
And does this have anything to do with, has there been any proposal for any sort of structure onto this property?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, there is not at this point. Um, the property owner approached the, the town about annexation, and that is it at this point. There is no formal application in for any type of development.
Thank you. Council, will you have any additional questions, Vice Mayor?
Can we address the speakers?
You can, this is your opportunity to speak however you would like, Vice Mayor.
So Eric, I had one question for you. I counted six steps that have to happen in this annexation process from your very well-written staff report. What are the timeframes estimate, like short time, long time?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, Vice Mayor, uh, so basically, once this has been concluded, um, after the 30-day waiting period from when we filed the blank annexation petition, we could then gather signatures. Once we gather signatures, if we have over 50% of the property ownership as well as 50% of the, uh, valuation, we would then come back to council with, uh, an ordinance to annex the, the said property. Um, once the property is annexed, there would then be a holding zone placed on the property of, uh, a similar zoning designation that currently occurs in the county, I believe it's RCU 70, um, that would be placed on that property. At that point, um, after 30 days, once the, if the ordinance is, uh, approved by the council, then that property would be annexed in. At that point, the developer or the, the property owner or whomever may then start making application to the town for, uh, any type of, the type of development that they wish to, uh, do on that, on their property. But that, that's kind of the overall process.
Do you have a timeframe for all of that? Are we talking six months, a year?
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, it really just depends on the, the signatures that we gather.
Okay, great. Good answer, thank you. So the first speaker, and I'm sorry I didn't get your name. Peggy. Um, we don't have a property tax, so we're not trying to go out and grub for more development because we have a property tax. So Prescott Valley does not have a property tax. Um, and then you mentioned water studies. We have a lot of water studies, and I encourage you to meet with John Munderlow, who's here in the audience, and his number is 759-3105, if you're interested. I see you reaching for a pen, so I can repeat that. Ready? And he has some great PowerPoints and information. Um, and then the second speaker, I didn't catch where you live, Prescott Valley, but in the town or in, in the town? Okay, great. Um, and then Mr. Carros, um, you refer to that Arizona study and have referred to it, but in my reading of it, and Mr. Munderlow can correct me if I'm wrong, it is dealing with information in the valley and AMAs in the valley, and it doesn't really refer to our area at all.
Actually, folks, hey, this is how we're going to do things.
So I'm just, I'm making a comment. I want to call that to the audience's attention. And please, I encourage everybody, if you'd like to have more information, reach out to John Munderlow. We have a website full of information. We do have plans for water. We have an agenda item tonight for an injection well that puts more water into the ground also, and that hasn't been done in this area yet, so we'll be the first one to do it. So we have plans. We're implementing the plans, so please be educated.
Um, hang on, clerk, you have something?
Yes, there's one more blank one for Michelle Oy. Michelle?
Here she comes.
Do you want to speak on this agenda item?
Yeah. Okay.
You gotta be loud, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Michelle Oy. I'm a resident of Granville, and it appears to me that the way the process goes is that first there's a vote about annexation, and then the developer decides what to do. I'm surprised. I thought there would be maps here showing the proposed activity, and the residents would have a better idea of what was proposed to go into this area.
Is that it?
Is... Is there a chance we will get better maps, or is that not a concern at this point? The council either gives a broad stroke to approve or to not approve.
Ma'am, this is just an opportunity for the land to be annexed in to the town of Prescott Valley. There'll be other opportunities to actually show up to other meetings where you'll see renderings from perhaps someone who may want to put different structures on the property. So, there's always time for that. This is not about that. We're not talking about that now.
I'm just surprised that the council doesn't know what is proposed for there when they go to their vote, and apparently, this is the process.
We might actually have a... We can refer back to the general plan if you'd like, and you can kind of see, get an idea of what was projected for that portion of the property. It was one of the slides early on that we can bring back up, and you can take a look at if you'd like.
Yeah, I don't remember, and I don't know housing, commercial, retail, tall structures, short structures. It seems like it would make a big difference.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for coming out. Sir, will you please respond back to that slide I believe she's referencing?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, so one of the items that when we look in the long term, so in the Prescott Valley General Plan 2025, we have designated this area as a growth Tier 1. Again, a growth Tier 1 is the next growth area that the town respects that growth would move into, and one of the reasons to look at a growth Tier 1 is the fact that there is public infrastructure adjacent to and ready to be expanded into. So, one of the things that when we look at that is we have land uses that are specifically designated for that area. And in the PAD 3-1, growth Tier 1, we have mixture of uses, including commercial, mixed-use, regional, community, and neighborhood commercial offices, public civic industrial business park, and so forth. Once we... If the council annexes this property in, then at that point, it's the ability of those property owners within that area to then develop their parcels in accordance with our general plan. So, there would be further public hearings, there would be further discussions, there would be further drawings, exhibits, and so forth that are associated with that potential development. So, at that time, there would be further public hearings, further public notices, and so forth. So, as the mayor very well said, you know, this is kind of the first step to take in or potentially consider taking in property, and then at that time, if the council votes to affirm an ordinance to annex that property, they would then have the ability to come in and go through the review process, and then go through the public hearing process to potentially develop that property in a way they see fit.
And just to be clear, this was all part of the general plan that was voted on by the citizens years ago before anyone on this council ever sat up here?
Mayor, council? Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Council, do we have any more questions? Clerk, just confirming.
Hold on. No more.
No one else?
I just want to... I just want to, for extra clarification, so people... So, everyone understands, the annexation is not a blank check to the development of the property. It's not a, okay, you're annexed in, have fun, you know, we'll check back in in a few months. The process of the annexation is just now the land is going from county designation to town designation, and then where it goes from there, we'll be right back in here looking at those steps. Am I correct?
Mayor, council member, that is correct. And in fact, if the property isn't annexed within the town, they can still develop that property outside of town. So, that is one thing that I did not say upfront, is they have the ability to develop that parcel, those parcels of land within or outside the town limits. So, one of the reasons you annex property is so that you have more control over what goes into that property when it comes down to it. So, there would be further development, there's no blank check. That's one of the things that annexation provides towns and cities in Arizona.
Hypothetically, it could just... If the town of Prescott Valley does not annex it in, the owner decides to go to the county, and they could rezone it hypothetically all industrial. It could just be a 36 or whatever size parcels of industrial.
Mayor, worst-case scenario, that they could definitely do that. We would have comments on it, but again, we would not have the overriding ability to stop them from doing so.
Thank you. Council, anything else? Councilwoman, anything else?
I was saying, they could also, if they were just to do another home development and start drilling wells, that they would not have to get a 100-year assured water supply for, which any development within the town is required to get from the state of Arizona, correct?
Mayor, council member, yes. If they come in and want to do a residential master plan development, they would be required to get a certificate of assured water supply, and then we would go through that process, correct?
Yep.
Vice Mayor?
And, thank you. That was a great question. So, they could drill a bunch of individual wells, much like Copperfield has done out there, which could impact the water tables like the Speaker 1 talked about?
Mayor, council, so water isn't my necessarily forte in this area. I come from the valley, but from my understanding, and Mr. Mundelow would be better to answer that, but I believe that if they decided to do residential wells at a certain GPM, they could do so.
All right, thank you, sir. With that being said, we're going to close the public hearing on this, on 10A. Moving on, item 10B, proposed annexation ANX 20-002 Southwest Park View Drive, Part Section 27. This is also a public hearing, which we will open at this time.
Mayor, council, so this is annexation 20-002. Again, similar to the previous annexation, this is the public hearing for this annexation. It's associated with Section 27, actually, the southern portion of that section. So, here's the general location map of the area. It's adjacent to Pronghorn Ranch, north of the current town limits. Here is the annexation map associated with this annexation. As you can see, it's about 353 acres, give or take, associated with the south half, the majority of the south half of Section 27. As a... Just as a reminder, here's the general plan land use associated map associated with the annexation area. This annexation area is actually in this general quadrant right here, associated with Village PAD-D1, but it's very close to the previous annexation area that's in this area. So, the Village PAD-D1 site, the site as you see right here, the overall Village PAD is about 1,200 acres. It's the northwest area of town. The character, as you can see, is listed out there, and the land use associated with this area includes pedestrian or mixed uses, various residential densities, and community services. Somewhat similar, but a little bit different than kind of the previous PAD-31. One of the reasons for this is that it has no frontage on State Route 89A, so there's no real look for potential manufacturing industry that could possibly be in the future. With that said, that ends my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We'll just do it like we did before. Clerk, do we have anyone for this portion?
I don't have any comments for item 10B.
Eric, you can stay up here. Just go back to that map a little bit, please. So, the only concern, and I'm sure if there's citizens at home watching on this, or the citizens that live in the viewpoint, and if you looked at the homes that are on the west end of the viewpoint, that abut this portion of the property that we're talking about, every one of those homes have like a view fence. They basically have half a block wall and, you know, like an iron railing kind of fence there. So, and I've heard it before, and that portion of the viewpoint was built out very early. That was one of the first areas of the viewpoint that was built. I would say probably '96 through 2000. And I'm sure the way it was built, those that were living there were given the impression that they were going to have these abundant views forever. My only concern is this, and this is going to be steps further down the line, it's not at this public hearing, but when someone wishes to come over to this spot and they wish to develop it, there's no way, at least in my opinion, or at least with my vote, would they be able to put a house right along this fence line and be able to just do what they do and just try to stack the houses? And I'm just saying that now because we have that opportunity to tell a person or tell a developer, hey, you have to take this into consideration that these folks had this view, and no, they're not going to be able to see all the way to Granite Mountain, but they should be able to at least have some sort of spacing. And I'm confident, working through the process with parks or with our planning and zoning, that that will happen, and that we'll all have an opportunity to have some input in regards to what happens in this spot. So, please don't think that it's just going to be a high-rise building for those folks in the viewpoint, because my loyalty lies with those folks in the viewpoint that have been here for years and years and years as opposed to this site here. So, I just want to just share my comments and my thoughts on that. Council, anything else? And Clerk, just confirming, we don't have...
We don't have any for item 10B.
All right. With that being said, I am going to close the public hearing for 10B. Thank you, sir. Item 10C, General Plan 2025, Minor Amendment, GPA 19-002, Granville Units 15 and 16. This is also a public hearing. Open it up.
Mayor, members of the council, you're going to get a heavy dose of me tonight, so... So, again, GPA 19-002, this is for the Granville Unit 15 and 16, General Plan Minor Amendment. Here's the general locations of the minor amendment. It's associated with the Granville Master Plan Development on the northeast corner of Glasford Hill and Santa Fe Loop, and then at the southeast and southwest corners of Tuscany Way and Santa Fe Loop. Here's a closer image of the site. So, currently under the existing land use map, these areas are designated as open space, public, quasi-public, and community commercial. The developer of Granville, who's actually here and has a presentation that he would like to share with council after this presentation, is looking to amend the general plan land use map to the following. So, we're looking at a potential low-density residential area associated with the area east of, or yeah, east of Granville or Glasford Hill Road, and then low-density residential in the areas that are commercial. One of the other items that I failed to mention earlier was that one of the other applicants associated with this is the Humboldt Unified School District. The little notch you see at the top of the eastern portion of the property is property that's owned by the school district. So, one of the items that the developer will... The applicant will tell you about is their conversations with them about a possible trade for that property associated with Granville Unit 15. So, Granville Unit 15 is the area that's west or east of Glasford. Granville Unit 16 is the areas associated with Tuscany Way and Santa Fe Loop. And again, so we're looking at low-density residential, community, commercial on the corner there of Glasford Hill and Santa Fe Loop, and then low-density residential there at the corners of Tuscany Way and Santa Fe Loop. And with that said, if you have any questions of staff, I'm happy to answer those. There is a PowerPoint for Mr. Joe Contadino, the applicant, that is loaded up, and if you would like, he would definitely come up here and give you a presentation.
Let's go.
Welcome, sir.
Mayor and council members, my name's Joe Contadino. I've been the developer of Granville since we broke ground in October of 2001. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak and try and fill in a kind of a background of why we're here tonight, and how we got to where we are, and why we're doing what we're doing. The original... The map that's displayed, it was the original map that we used to zone Granville back in 1999, and it's actually been developed almost exactly as it was originally designed, except for the golf course was never developed. We worked on building a golf course. We actually had a grading plan for an entire golf course. Back in the 90s, when you did a master plan, a golf course was kind of considered a standard amenity, that if you had a property that size, you had to have a golf course. And we were just right at the beginning of turning of golf courses where they were not very attractive, and we actually spent over a year working with one of the professional golfers company, and they... We wound up at a point where they said, if you develop it and give it to us, we'll take it. We said that wasn't... We didn't think that was a good idea. So, we committed to leave all of the drainage channel where the golf course is mainly developed as permanent open space, and those channels, drainage channels have been deeded to the homeowners association, and they will be forever open space. The commercial corners that we had originally developed, we originally planned that we would have neighborhood commercial services, and this doesn't work very well. There's a... On the corner of Santa Fe Loop Road and Granville Fairway over on the west boundary, there's two commercial corners, two on Tuscany and Santa Fe Loop Road. And those four commercial corners, we finally got to the point where we said they'll never be developed. The two over on Granville Fairway, we converted one to a residential dog park. It's a neighborhood dog park owned by the association, managed by the association. The southeast corner, we developed as single-family houses. I think there's eight homes on that, but that was originally commercial. We've held back the two corners on Tuscany and the Santa Fe Loop Road for 15 years. They've been for sale since about 2003, and they've been developed since about 2005. And in the last 15, 17 years, we never had a serious buyer. We had some people talk to us in 2008, just before the crash, and that fell apart. So, as we get down to the end of Granville, we're left with these two corners. My commercial real estate friends say that these commercial corners don't work anymore. They financially don't work for small shops. We had envisioned them to be that your typical, maybe a pizza parlor, hair salon, nail salon, a real estate office, a bank, a title company, those kind of neighborhood services, but they don't work anymore. So, we feel that we need to do something with it besides growing weeds, so we've developed... We plan to develop that into a total of 30 lots, 14 on the west side and 16 on the east side. The second parcel that we're talking about zoning is the... Oh, I'd like to mention one more thing. We obtained zoning for 3,400 homes, and I'm not sure if many people know how this came about, but we worked with the Department of Water Resources with the original master plan, cutting the parcel, the entire 1,000 acres into individual parcels, and each one of those parcels was designated for specific lot sizes and lot counts. And if you look down in the right... The right-hand corner, there's a chart, and that's the chart, and we went through each of the parcels, and it totaled 3,400 homes. So, that's what we've used. That's what the Department of Water Resources has granted a certificate on, and when we originally got the certificate, we got a certificate for 3,400 homes. As we develop individual parcels, we get partial certificates for that parcel. The water can only be used in Granville. We can't take it anywhere else, and it can't be used anywhere else. So, this is what we've been working on over the last 20 years as we've developed each of these pieces. We have... We've got to the point where we have... We got down, and the last large parcel is on the northwest corner of Santa Fe Loop Road and Tuscany. There's been quite a bit of... There's been quite a bit of dirt work going on there for the last six months. We just recorded the plat last Friday, and we expect to have streets paved by the first of May. They're starting to put sub base down today, and we'll have those streets black. So, as we got to the end, we wound up with about 3,250 homes available that we've developed. And we have room for 3,400. That's what our allotment is, and that's what our zoning is. So, it takes us to parcel 15. We, when, in the original zoning, if you, if you look at the parcel on the northeast corner of Santa Fe Loop Road and Glassford Hill Road, it shows a blue bubble as an elementary school site. And the zoning was granted on the condition that we donate 20 acres to the school district. There was nothing more specific than that. So, what we did is we donated 20 acres to the school district, and they came down, they came down Glassford Hill Road and squared off to where we had 20 acres. So, we gave the school district 20 acres. They built the elementary school about 2007, opened it. But you can see an existing fence line that the school built that's a lot shorter than the 20 acres they got. They actually have about 15 acres fenced in. As, back in 1998, 99, when this was all planned, I guess we didn't look far enough into the future to see what, what the population would do. But when the school opened, buses came in off of Granville Parkway. They accessed Glassford Hill Road. They could turn right or left, and they could come into the school. As time went on, Glassford Hill Road traffic increased. It became unsafe. There was a number of accidents at the intersection, and the town blocked any left-hand turns from Granville Parkway on the Glassford Hill Road. That forced the school buses to drive around Granville Parkway to the north end, where there's a traffic signal. So, the buses could get out at Granville Parkway and go north-south. But we heard a number of complaints from our homeowners because of the bus traffic going through, through the community, and I realized we, we didn't do a very good job in our planning. So, it's always kind of in the back of my mind, how can we really solve this problem? And the solution would be to provide access to the Santa Fe Loop Road. But that land is all designated as floodplain. If you, if you can look at this map, there's a, there's a blue line, a dotted blue line that circles, that circles this entire property. And that line, everything within that boundary is designated as a floodplain. And with that designation by FEMA, no one is allowed to do anything in that, within that boundary, to do any kind of development, not even to move dirt. It's a floodplain, it's designated, and it is untouchable. So, as I, as I looked at it, I said, I kind of surprised if, if we could convert this channel, channelize this area, and convert that large area around in blue to the channel, we could have access to this property, and we could provide access to the school, which would solve a problem. Because the school, I don't know if you've ever been there, at the drop-off and pickup, but there's tons of cars, they back up, they back up into the subdivision, and it's just not a very good situation. So, I approached the then-superintendent, Dan Streeter, and said, "You know, if we could do this, would you be able to swap that little piece of land that's in tan, and we'll build you the road to the school?" Dan said, "I'll, I'll look into it." He talked to people. We did a presentation to the school board, and they were in favor of it. We did not enter into any agreement because of the difficulty and all the issues that had to be addressed and solved before this could take place. We, we had a, basically, we had a handshake deal, that we would, if you agree to give us the dirt when we need it, we'll put the road in. And we've operated like that for the last year. In that meantime, we, we hired the engineers to complete, which is what is called as a CLOMAR. It's a conditional letter of map revision, which takes that flood channel, that flood zone, and channelizes it into the red, into the red dotted area. We've spent, it's taken one year to get approval, and we just received approval about two weeks ago. We, the FEMA issued what they called a CLOMAR, which is a letter that allows us now to go drain, grade that channel according to the engineering plans that we've prepared and that they've approved, and the approval process took most of the time. If we, if we grade that channel and create the channel that we've designed, they will issue what they call a LOMAR, which is a letter of map revision, which will then redefine the flood channel in this area to that red dotted line. So, we just received approval, and our, our plan is to start moving the dirt over that's stockpiled on the corner of Santa Fe Loop Road and Tuscany onto this site. This will bring, if you drive by that site, the proposed commercial corner is probably seven to 10 feet below Glassford Hill. When we are done, that will be level. We will, we'll be leveled to Glassford Hill. We have about 130,000 yards of dirt to move, to level this site, to create these home sites, and to provide access. So, we've met with the school board again recently. They, they re-approved going forward. We still don't have anything in writing. I don't need it. We've, we've got a commitment. We're going to fulfill our commitment. And hopefully, within the next six or eight months, we can turn a road over to this school site. There's, there's been, we've had issues. The homeowners have said that this will flood, that the engineering is faulty. Of course, we disagree with that. FEMA establishes their guidelines, and we've met them. We've taken three snapshots, four snapshots. You see that A, B, C, and D. That's a cross-section between existing homes and the new lots that we propose to build. At Section A, it's 370 feet, which is like a football field, almost a football field and a half distance. B, Section B, the cross-section between the existing Granville Unit 1 and the proposed is 220 feet. C is 120, and D is 180 feet. So, there's, there will not be houses bucking up against the original Granville Unit 1. So, that, that's how we got to where we are. It's been, this is, I'd have to describe this as trying to solve a problem, is to try and squeeze some zoning and get some additional profits out of this. Because as a result of this, we've had to hire the engineering, we have to move the dirt, and we have to improve Santa Fe Loop Road. The total cost of that is about $2.5 million. So, the housing will help offset the cost of all that, and we, we are doing it. Our basic reason for doing this is to try and solve a bit of a school problem. That's pretty much all I have to say. Oh, this is a drawing of what the crossing would be for a bus. It's not a great bus. I'd have to imagine that's an engineer's vision of what a bus looks like. But there'll be a gradual slope. It's a four-to-one slope, so that it won't be a steep bank, and the road to the school will be a paved road. It won't be a rock road or anything. It'll be to the town specs. The school has requested a sidewalk on the west side, which we've agreed to do, and then we'll have curb and gutter. So, it'll be a municipal street. They will, the school will be able to have a fence on the south end to close off the school, and they will be able to use that as, as they see fit. One other thing, it's not really relevant to the zoning, but we're pretty much done with Granville, and we have designated 300 acres of open space. I don't know that anybody really knows that, and it's maybe hard to see. But of that 300 acres, only 17 acres is designated for residential use. 56 acres that we've dedicated to the town for parks and open space, and the other is 226 acres. And there's what it looks like. While there's quite a bit of density, a third of the property is open space. I think that's, that's all I had.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk?
Will Citizen John Postest come forward? He filled out a card.
Ladies and gentlemen, Humboldt Unified School District Superintendent. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm John Postest, I'm the superintendent of HUSD, and I wanted to come and just let you know, Joe's been doing some speaking on our behalf, and I wanted to come and just confirm to you that we have been engaging conversations with him. He did speak with Dan, my predecessor, last year in our school board. He did come again last month to talk to the board. The board did give its approval. Operationally, from the school district's point of view, this does solve some issues that we have, particularly with our buses and the congestion and everything. So, just want to let you know that when Joe tells you that the, that the school district is supportive, we are supportive.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for coming out.
No other comments?
No other comments? Is it on this matter, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. I, I, I was, I, I.
No, you're okay. Come on up. Just please state your name.
My name is Jody Smith, and my question is, is will this increase our taxes? Not the town at Prescott Valley, but I don't live in the town. I live in the city, and I pay taxes. Will this development raise our taxes?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Has nothing to do with that.
Well, I study law, so I would have to respectfully disagree.
Okay.
The other thing is, is that this is a political setting, correct? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
You didn't do that to the Humboldt guy. Why are you doing it to me? I'm one of the people. All political power, wait a minute, I don't mean, with all respect, all respect, the people should get more than three minutes if they want it, because all political power is inherent in the people. That's in our constitution, the Declaration of Independence. And I'm not so sure of this zoning, because annex means taxes to those people that are going to buy that land. Now, if I was, if I was just, went up to that land, if I owned it, I could build a house on it right now. And it doesn't matter how much Granvilles, in my opinion, you build. If there's drought, we're not going to get water, period. That's historical. So, it seems like Council Vice Mayor already has her mind made up, because she's trying to tell us to educate ourselves. I'm just thinking logically, respectfully.
Thank you, ma'am. Clerk, is there anyone else?
No.
Anything we wish to add? Sir?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, just to reiterate, so this is a general plan amendment, and at this point, we'd be acting, the council would be acting on a general plan amendment. There are two following ZMC zoning cases for this project as well that are associated with this, so I just wanted to add that.
Sir, if there's nothing else for either applicant, I'll close the public hearing. On to item 10D, General Plan 2025, Minor Amendment, GPA 19-002, Granville Units 15 and 16. And I, and before we get to this part, I just want to say that I've seen what they've been talking about in regards to how it affects the school. I've been down Glassford Hill. I've seen it where cars have actually made it all, all the way to the shoulder on Glassford Hill. And if we can do something to prevent a bus crash on Glassford Hill, then by golly, I am going to do it. So, if this can alleviate that, which it does, and it prevents, it provides a safe route for buses, then I'm 100% for this. And I understand where, where we're coming from. The applicant is still underneath his 3,400 homes that he was given back in, I believe, 1996. I don't know, Mr. Contadino, when was it that you first came to council for Granville? What year?
1996.
1996.
20,000 people, Glassford Hill was a two-lane road.
Yes, sir. I'm well aware of how that was, and it was a long time ago. And I recognize that the, not being able to see into the future and predict that this was going to be an issue on Glassford Hill with buses, but it is an issue. And it's our job as a council to work with the Humboldt Unified School District and solve a problem. So, that's all I have to say on this. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor, in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign Resolution Number 2175, amending the Prescott Valley General Plan 2025 as attached, the GPA 19-002, by electronic vote.
I second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Thanks, ma'am. Moving on, item 10E, zoning map change, ZMC 19-009, Granville Units 15 and 16 residential. This is also a public hearing.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, it's ZMC 19-009. This is Granville zoning map change, units 15 and 16. As a background, here are the locations, again, similar locations to the general plan amendment. Also very similar, similar locations. So, one of the items that's a little different, so under the current zoning, the zoning map, the majority of Unit 15, which is the area there off of Glassford Hill and Santa Fe Loop, is actually zoned R1L-10P80. So, the area that we're rezoning in this case is specifically to the PL, the Public Land Section, which is the, the piece of property that's owned by the Humboldt Unified School District. The other portion of the property that would be potentially rezoned are the two C1 districts there, associated at the corner of Tuscany Way and Santa Fe Loop Road. One other item, so if the zoning map is changed, here would be the, the new zoning map, again, the area there at the PL designation would be changed to R1L-10P80, and the two C1 areas would be R1L-10-P80 as well. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on the previous month, or earlier this month, Granville Unit 15, preliminary development plan was conditionally approved. You saw this earlier, as Mr. Contadino presented, where there's a total of 56 lots, access into, in a commercial corner that's associated with the PDP. That commercial corner is actually associated with the next ZMC, the next zoning map change. The other area is Granville Unit 16. So, the preliminary development plan on Unit 16 was conditionally approved. Again, both these preliminary development plans were conditionally approved, pending the approval of the council of the zoning map changes. In this case, as Mr. Contadino said, there's about 500. In this case, as Mr. Contadino said, there's about 30 total lots, 16 on the one corner, about 30 on the other corner. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those, as well as the applicant is here, and can answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. And again, we'll open it up to the public with, clerk?
John, do you have any more comments? That's it.
Counsel, we have any comments or questions for the applicant? At this time, I'll close the public hearing. Move on to item 10F, zoning map change, ZMC 19-009, Granville Unit 15 and 16 residential. This is the first reading. Need a motion? Read the first.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to read Ordinance Number 884, approving zoning map change, ZMC 19-009. Once by title, then place, then place the same on the final passage and sign any agreement passage and by electronic vote. I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Pardon me, was that to approve any agreement under Prop 207?
Yes.
Okay.
Am I supposed to say that part?
Yes.
Okay. I thought that was a typo, I'm sorry. And then I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously.
Clerk, will you please?
Ordinance Number 884. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, ZMC 19-9, by changing the zoning classification of an approximately two-acre site located northeast of the northeast corner of Glassford Hill Road and Santa Fe Loop Road, in a portion of Section 3. Township 14 North, Range 1 West, and approximately six acres located at the southeast and southwest corners of Tuscany Way and Santa Fe Loop Road, in a portion of Section 10. Township 14 North, Range 1 West, of the Gila and Salt River Basin, Meridian, Yabba Bay County, Arizona. From PLPAD, Public Plan, Public Lands Planned Area Development, to R1L10PAD, Residential Single Family Limited Planned Area Development, and C1PAD, Commercial Neighborhood Sales and Services Planned Area Development, to R1L10PAD, Residential Single Family Limited Planned Area Development, and approving that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item 10G, zoning map change, ZMC 19-010, Granville Unit 15, Commercial. Public hearing, I'll open it up again.
Mayor, members of the council, again, this is ZMC 19-010, this is the Unit 15 zoning map change. Just a little background again, this zoning map change is at the corner of Glassford Hill Road and Santa Fe Loop. Here is a closer, a close-up view of that area. So here is the current site. It's general in nature. When you looked at the preliminary development plans, they have like the cul-de-sac cut out and a couple, but for the most part, this is the area that would be, that is potentially being rezoned from RL10PAD to C1 or C2PAD. Again, this was the preliminary unit, preliminary development plan that was approved by council conditionally, and as you can see, the proposed commercial areas there at the corner of Santa Fe Loop Road and Glassford Hill Road. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Clerk?
No comments.
No comments. Counsel, will you have anything for the applicant? Close the public hearing. Moving on to, I believe we're on 10H?
Yes.
Zoning map change, ZMC 19-010, Granville Unit 15, Commercial. First reading.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to read Ordinance Number 885, approving zoning map change, ZMC 19-010. Once by title only, on, once by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage and sign any agreement under Prop 207 or by electronic vote. I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10I, zoning map change, ZMC 20-006.
Can you read the?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Okay. Ordinance Number 885. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, ZMC 19-10, by changing the zoning classification of an approximately two-acre site located at the northeast corner of Glassford Hill Road and Santa Fe Loop Road, in a portion of Sections 3 and 10. Township 14 North, Range 1 West of the Gila and Salt River Basin, Meridian, Yabba Bay County, Arizona. From R1L10PAD, Residential Single Family Limited Planned Area Development, to C2PAD, Commercial General Sales and Services Planned Area Development, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you. Now, moving on to item 10I, zoning map change, ZMC 20-006, viewpoint to senior community. This is a public hearing, opening it up.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, so as you stated, this is the ZMC 20-006, the viewpoint to senior living zoning map change. So as, here's the general location, located within the town center. There's a close-up location, it's there off of, a little bit south of Long Look, off of Viewpoint Drive, north of the Civic Center. So the current zoning of the site is actually R2-2PAD. So a few years back, the rezoning was done, and there was a preliminary development plan which allowed for approximately 54 total units within this section of the viewpoint. There's viewpoint one and two. So in those 54 units, the majority of those were two-bedroom units. Since that time, the applicant, while going through the market and so forth, has seen that the one-bedroom units actually move, move better, and there's actually more occupancy in them. So at this point, the applicant is looking to include about 73 one-bedroom units and one two-bedroom kind of manager's quarter unit. With that change, that requires a change in the zoning, specifically to the density district. So as you know, the R2 is the zoning district, and then the dash two is the density district. So with this change, with the, going from about 53 or 54 units to 73 units, requires a change to R2 dash one, oop, sorry. R2 dash one. The, the basis of the floor plan is pretty much not changed. The, the height of the buildings have not, have not changed much. But the, the unit count has changed. And with that unit count, that necessitated the need to go to a dash one density district. So here's the, at the previous Planning and Zoning Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of, or approved the preliminary development plan associated with the viewpoint two. And that was predicated upon the council approving the zoning change. Again, here's kind of the overall layout. Here are the elevations, elevations match that of the existing viewpoint that's in place. And then here is the landscape plan associated with that. At some point, the, the applicant will come back in for a final development plan that will be heard by the council. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. I believe also the applicant is in the audience that can answer those, any questions as well.
It's opportunity. Hang on one second, sir. Clerk?
No com, no, no comments. Sorry.
Sir, I know you didn't fill out a form, but if you have a comment on this, you're more than welcome. So you, so you have to come down to the microphone if you wish to speak? Just so they could hear you on TV?
I simply was hoping he could put the map back up so we're, we could see exactly where this is.
Sure. He absolutely can do that. And for those to, to get a little bit more reference as opposed to just looking at this slide, it's directly to the east of Bob Edwards Park, and just directly to the south of Long Look. Basically, if we just went right outside onto Scoop Boulevard, we'd be able to see the, see the location. So you'll see other, and the applicant is here. Is the applicant involved in the other two buildings that are already in the area?
Yes.
I'm sorry, who said that?
Yes.
Yes. So on your way out, folks, you'll be able to check it out, that it is very consistent with what is going on in that area, and it will flow very well, in my opinion, so. Anyone else from the audience wish to have any questions? Counsel, vice mayor?
I want to thank the applicant, I don't know where he is. Thank you for this project. I know you have a long waiting list, and that there's a great need for this affordable housing for our seniors.
If there's nothing else, I'll close the public hearing. Move on to item 10J, zoning map change, ZMC 20-006, viewpoint to senior community, first reading.
I'll make a motion. Motion to read Ordinance Number 886, approving zoning map change, ZMC 20-006, once by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage.
Hang on one second before we get a second, Mr. Parker?
Yes, really quickly, historically, to be able to get additional points, this is an application, we have entered into agreements with the developer for the preceding units. Because of our participation to have affordable housing, they get additional certifications for funding. We do that by deferring the development impact fees for this project, which would amount to probably a million dollars. We do that companion to the final development plan, and we've done so previously with the two other applications there. That's not to say that the town doesn't get the money, but it flows to the town at certificate of occupancy as opposed to issuance of a building permit. That really helps gaining points, so we can recognize this project sooner than later. That would come to you by separate agreement.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please, to Councilwoman Heppert's motion?
Second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ordinance Number 886. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, ZMC 20-006, by changing the zoning classification of an approximately two-acre site located south of the southeast corner of Viewpoint Drive and Long Look Drive, in a portion of Section 14. Township 14 North, Range 1 West of the Gila and Salt River Basin, Meridian, Yabba Bay County, Arizona. From R2-2PAD Residential, Multiple Dwelling Units, Planned Area Development, to R2-1PAD Residential Multiple Dwelling Units, Planned Area Development, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item 10K, professional service agreement, civil tech engineering, Mountain Valley Recharge Well, CIP Number W435.2.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We're talking tonight about the next step in our recharge well. We've talked about a few of these things before, but just so that we have a refresher. In 2020, we just put these numbers together, we were generating quite a bit of effluent, as we do. We have recharge facilities, but we only gained credit for about two-thirds of the effluent that we have available, around 830 acre feet of effluent. The, the value in gallons up there, 270 million gallons of water is discharged down the channel of the Owafreea River and not credited to recharge for us. One of the important aspects of recharged effluent is the ability to provide water for future development without impacting groundwater supplies. This is a hugely important concept. There's a lot of information on this slide to try to unpack, but there's a higher power, there's a higher power involved in the Prescott Valley Town Council when it comes to water in our area. That power is the state of Arizona, which has maintained primacy over water issues in our area throughout the state. And they are in charge of issuing allocations for water to new lots. They took over charge of that allocation process in 1980 with the passage of the 1980 Groundwater Management Act. Prior to that time, there was not a strong management program in our area or throughout the state. And in Prescott Valley, about 10,600 lots were platted and approved on various programs related to water supply. Between the time period after the passage of the act, the 1980 Groundwater Management Act, and a declaration in 1999, about 7,600 lots were approved by the state through a process that requires a certificate of assured water supply. And as you heard, some of the comments from Joe Contadino when he was talking about Granville, during that time, when the developers started setting aside their, their plans for development, they received, they approached the Department of Water Resources, they received a certificate of assured water supply. And based off of that, the town councils were able to approve those developments. It's important to note that the town councils were not able, in state law, to disapprove those developments on the basis of water. Because the state takes primacy on that decision. And if they say the development has enough water, you can't overrule essentially the state legislature on that decision. So since that time period, in 1999, the, the state said, we will not issue new allocations to groundwater anywhere within the basin. And that has had a huge impact on new lots within Prescott Valley. As you can see from the graph, we've only issued 360, we've only been able to approve 362 new lots based off the issuance of the certificate of assured water supply in 20 years. So when people talk about new growth in Prescott Valley, have to understand that the water allocation occurs when the lot is platted and approved and recorded by the Department of Real Estate. So the vertical manifestation of growth, the buildings and that sort of thing, is not an allocation of the water supply. The water supply allocation occurred decades ago. So also based off of this, as you can see, those 362 lots were not granted a groundwater allocation. So they do not dip into the aquifer, they do not dip into groundwater supplies that are set aside for the old lots, existing lots. They are required to use the reclaimed water or the effluent, as we refer to it. So over the years, we've developed various programs to put water in the ground, to refill the aquifer where we can. And we've been very successful, a little bit too successful in a way, because our two existing recharge facility, the North Plains Basins that you see off the edge of Fane Road when you're heading down, and in the bed of the Owafreea River, we've brought water levels up to within 15, 30 feet of the surface. That's part of the reason why we don't have enough capacity to recharge the effluent that we have available to us. So we're looking at doing this through a recharge well. You've previously approved the drilling of this recharge well and the hydrologic information that goes into drilling this recharge well. The concept, of course, is that this recharge well. The concept, of course, is that we can put water back into the ground directly into the aquifer, some distance away from our pumping wells, and it works as an exchange program. So if we put water into the aquifer at one location, the Department of Water Resources, through a large number of permitting processes, will let us take that water out of the ground from a well a distance away. Also, I think it's important to note that water levels in the aquifer are not level. It's not one flat table throughout the whole aquifer. There are high points, and there are low points. So there's not a universal impact from well, one well, or one point of pumping on another well that may be some distance away. Again, we're not the ones that make those determinations. The Department of Water Resources has a building full of hydrologists who make the decisions on well impact and whether or not is allowed by state law. So again, our injection well, drilling was completed and testing finalized in December 2020. Just some pictures of the well going in and being tested, some hydrologic information about the well itself, construction information. It's about 840 feet deep, about 13-inch diameter well. Some of the interesting test information on that. Basically, the well looks like it will take about 350 gallons per minute into the aquifer. So we have existing reclaim lines near the site that we will connect to the well and put in the ground. And so basically, we have, over there in the upper left, is a picture of the injection well right now. It's a hole in the ground that is cased, similar to maybe completing the frame and the axles on a vehicle, but we still need to put in the drivetrain and the passionate compartment, and make it look more like the picture on the lower right. So again, the item before you is an engineering contract, to do the design work on the pumps, the pipes, the buildings, and help with construction oversight with Civil Tech Engineering.
I have a question, John.
Are there any questions?
What other communities throughout Arizona are doing this sort of process?
That's correct. It's fairly common.
It is fairly common.
But we don't have any currently in this active management area.
Okay. Vice Mayor? Councilwoman?
No.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
That being said, can I have a motion?
I motion to approve a professional services agreement with Civil Tech Engineering, Inc., in the amount of 125,799 for design and construction oversight services for the Mountain Valley Recharge Well.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to just advise the public as well that Mr. Mundelo is available for questions. You can reach out to him, as the Vice Mayor said earlier. Contact our office directly. You can speak to Leah, who can set up an appointment, 928-759-3100, and you can have all your questions answered. So, thank you. That being said, we'll move on to item 10I, or 10J, or 10L apparently, I guess. I don't know. Well purchase agreement, Monks Well, Fairgrounds 2, CIP number W471. Approval submitted by Mr. Wadsworth.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. We talked in length about this last week at the work-study meeting, and so I wasn't going to go through the entire presentation that I had, but unless you would like for me to do that, I was going to basically just put this back up there to remind you what we're talking about. This would be for the acquisition of a half-acre piece of property that contains an existing well currently owned by Fane Land and Cattle Company. The location is about roughly a half a mile south of the fairgrounds. The reason for purchasing this property and this existing well would be to equip the well, connect it to our water system, which is located there at the fairgrounds, and be able to provide redundant capacity to the fairgrounds and Mingus West water system. So this would be actually a third well for that system, again, primarily for redundancy and reliability purposes. And we believe that we would equip this well for the ability to pump between 500 and 800 gallons per minute. That would be the pumping capacity. Now, we wouldn't be pumping that, you know, 24 hours a day. That's just what it's able to pump. The other two wells that are existing and on the system, one of them, its capacity is somewhere around 100 to 150 gallons per minute, and the other one is about twice that amount. And so, a number of years ago, anybody who was living here, I'm going to say this was about 12 years ago, there was a time where we actually had both of those wells, the existing wells, out of service for, one was taken down for a repair of the well, or an annual, or a maintenance that has to be done fairly routinely, say, once every five or 10 years, we take them down and do some things to them, clean them and such. And at that same time, we had a lightning strike at the other well location. So both wells were out of service, and, you know, the good thing is, we have water storage, and that's why we have storage tanks, is to get us through short periods of time, usually one to five days potentially on storage. So we were able to quickly get up there and try and get one of those wells activated again. We didn't run out of water. But anyways, the reason for this well is to have a third well in that system as redundancy. And so what you're being asked to approve tonight is the purchase of a property from Fane Land and Cattle Company for $499,000. We would get a half-acre site which contains a drilled well, in addition to easements to get the power, the water line, and access to that site. And they would sign well-impact waiver forms on two wells that they still own and will continue to own, so that if our well impacts theirs, basically, they're saying you have permission to use this well. And so that's what we would be buying for the $499,000. As I mentioned previously, we wouldn't normally pay $499,000 for a piece of property that's only a half an acre, but it's got an existing well on it with a known capacity. So for us, that gives us some peace of mind. We don't have to go out and drill a well and hope we hit water, or get a well that's, you know, 20 gallons a minute and really not going to do us any good. So it's a known well, it's in a location close to existing facilities, it's pretty much the ideal property for us to purchase. And so I'm making the recommendation and asking for you to approve this agreement. And I think with that, I would open it up for any questions you might have.
Do we have any other additional questions? Are those, Councilwoman?
I don't have necessarily a question. I just have a comment. I had a conversation with Ryan with reference to what happened to Texas over the last couple of weeks, and from what I understand, most of their water is surface water. And, but this is going to be a wonderful addition. We thank you so much for your negotiations in this project.
If anyone wanted to follow back with more specific questions that were asked of Mr. Wadsworth, he can refer back to our work study, which I believe was, was it last week?
It was last week.
Was it last week?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the well purchase agreement with Fane Land and Cattle Company, as well as a related budget transfer in the amount of $499,000 by electronic vote.
I second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Mayor, the pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Moving on, item 10M, Construction Coyote Springs School Pedestrian Enhancement Project, CIP number S472, CDBG number 103-21, bid award.
Senator Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, this item you have before you is the Coyote Springs Pedestrian Enhancement Project. This project, we did talk about in more depth at last week's work study, but I'd like to hit a couple highlights and abbreviate my comments tonight. But this is a community development block grant that was competitive grant that the town was successful in obtaining. There is a little bit of a HIRF contribution to build this, basically a sidewalk in the vicinity of Coyote Springs School. The, you can see as delineated up there, this is a project sign we like to put out there to call attention to the funding source and some of the pertinent project information that will add the contractor's name, but we've had this up for a couple of weeks to alert the residents in the area of the impending construction, which is nice to see, and it's been well-received by residents. So this is a sidewalk improvement, as you can see here, on the east side of Cattle Track Road, and you can see we have connectivity there, which is nice to some of our multi-use paths, not only to the school, the main entrance to the school, but the Powers Avenue, there's a multi-use path that was built almost seven or eight years ago. So there's lots of trail connectivity that continues to add connectivity throughout the entire town. So this is the project limits that you see in front of you. As I mentioned, it's a sidewalk improvement project, and this is the funding source, community development block grants. We, I think, is about the ninth one we've done. We're always doing around schools, so we're adding that pedestrian access to all the schools. So it's a nice improvement for this area. Asphalt paving supply is the low bidder. They have a local contractor very good at building this type of improvements. We have a lot of confidence in their ability to build this project. Project timeline, if upon council award, would start within the next couple of weeks, and we anticipate them being done about mid-June and having this improvement ready for school when it starts up again, or when it does with the COVID environment, but we're looking forward to having it done by the end of June. Likewise, with all our contracts, Dave and Associates is a design engineer, and they do have already a construction period services agreement in place, but they will monitor the construction. With that, we have to answer any questions Councilmen have.
Mr. Davis, I just have to say, I just am super excited about this project, just because it's such a great addition to this area of town, and whenever you can connect a school to a park and to additional areas of travel, that's just great. So kudos to Ryan for going nine-for-nine on CDBG money. So, anything else?
That is competitive grant money, Mayor, so it's not promised to you. You have to go compete. So these particular projects, on their merits of the viability of it, and the town does a very good job, not only with the grant submissions, but even the administration through the design engineer and public work staff to deliver these projects. I know that the people that give us the money are very happy that when we tell them we're going to get it done, we don't ask for more money, and it's delivered on the timeline that we have. So we've gotten pretty proficient at these, which is nice to see.
Absolutely. Counsel?
Senator Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to award the construction bid and approve the related contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated, in an amount up to $578,888.88 by electronic vote.
One second.
Clerk, please call the vote. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Moving on, item 11, comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask that the town manager to review the matter, or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. With that being said, clerk?
Citizen Steve Karros.
Welcome back, sir.
This is in regards to 10L. I'll be very brief, since you already approved the well. What I did want to say is that in my research, I believe that the council really had no choice but to approve this well. And so I just wanted to point out that that is perhaps a good example of what can happen down the road when the council approves land acquisitions and whatnot. We end up coming across issues like this that had to be resolved with this well purchase. However, we can't escape the fact that that was a half a million bucks. And also, I believe that there may be potential liabilities and whatnot, because we're seeing issues out there in that area surrounding Mingus West, and certainly over in the Ventura Ranch area. So it's just taking an opportunity right now to, again, encourage forward thinking in these annexations and land acquisitions as to the potentials that aren't on the surface that may arise. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clerk?
No one else.
Ma'am?
Hello. I'd like to read something. It came from C.S. Lewis, 1942. It's called Old Devil's Letter to the Young. One young devil asked the old man, "How did you manage to bring so many souls to hell?" The old man, the old devil answered, "I instill fear in them." Answers the youngster, "Great job." And what were they afraid of? Wars, hunger? Answers the old man, "No, they're afraid of disease." For this youngster, "Does this mean they didn't get sick? Are they not dead? There was no rescue for them?" The old man answered, "But no, they got sick, they died. There was no rescue for their..." The young devil surprised, answered, "Then I don't understand." The old man answered, "You know they believed the only thing they have to keep at any cost is their life. They stopped hugging, greeting each other, they moved away from each other, they gave up social contacts and everything that was human. Later, they ran out of money, they lost their jobs, but that was their choice because they were afraid for their lives. That's why they quit their jobs without even having bread. They believed blindly everything they heard and read in the papers. They gave up their freedoms, they didn't leave their own homes, literally anywhere. They stopped visiting family and friends. The world turned into such a concentration camp without forcing them into captivity. They accepted everything, just to live at least one more miserable day. And so, living, they died every day. And that is how it was very easy for them to take their miserable souls to hell. I'm glad we started with prayer. I'm an evangelical, too. I pray in Jesus' name all the time. So I'd like to point out Isaiah 26:3, "That will keep him in perfect peace, whose might instate on God, because you trust him. With my soul if I desire, God, you, in the night; with my spirit within me, while I seek early. For when your judgments, God, are in the earth, the inhabitants of the world will learn righteousness." Evangelicals, that's who I'm speaking to tonight. We are the light and the salt of the earth. There is healing provision and salvation through Jesus. See the Greek word, salvation. There are nine gifts of the Holy Spirit, two of which are healing and working miracles. There's James, Chapter 6, verse 14 and 15. If there's any sycamore you, you know, bring him to the elders of the church. They will anoint their head with oil, and they will recover. And if they've committed any sin, they, their sins will be forgiven. Why are evangelicals playing church with the Pharisee church leaders instead of following the word of God? Jesus said his house would be a house of prayer. The evangelical church for the last year should have come together every day to pray for this country. Instead, followed the world order, and we go on as business as usual. #MaskDownAmerica. #AmericaMaskDown. Masks do not work, and there's no pandemic. Mainstream media is a liar. I have thousands of resources and proof that I brought with me, directly from the CDC.
Wrap it up, ma'am.
Masks represent fear, for God has not given us the spirit of fear, but of power, love, and a sound mind. Lots of fear about scriptures. I would, the atrocity, the atrocity is 800 kids go missing a year in the U.S. alone, and they're never brought home. So far, they said 500,000 have been killed by COVID-19.
All right, ma'am. I'm really sorry, ma'am, but you're going to have to just wrap it up. I'll give you a few more seconds.
I'd like to propose something to the city council, too. I'm going to get on the list for a presentation. It bothers me that you are shaking hands with the school board, and whoever Parker is, I don't know who he is, but I'm going to find out. You let them come up here and speak forever. You let the superintendent go as long as he wants. What you don't seem to understand, there's seven people here deciding everything for Prescott Valley, 50,000 people. That's not going to happen much longer.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming up. Thank you for coming out.
When are you going to understand that the rights of the people come before?
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else, clerk?
No. No one else.
And I'll offer it up because this is our first night for the sign-in sheet. If there's anyone out in the audience that missed that, you're more than welcome to come down. We'll move on to item 12. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Everyone, have a great night. Thank you for coming out. Please drive safe.